Tulgetzky.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
McCain.
Here.
Wertz.
Here.
Hyon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Rust.
Here.
Hanfelder.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, Administration has informed me they would like to amend the agenda to be able to brief the Board of Trustees on a matter that's just arisen under personnel. So I would suggest a motion to amend the agenda to include executive session for the purpose of appointment of employment, compensation, discipline, or receiving complaints of employees of the public body. I would suggest that we insert that after public comment, item three on the agenda, and before item four, the Omnibus Agenda. If you would like to do so, if you could ask for a motion.
We have a motion. So move. Second. Any comment? Roll call.
Tulgetzky.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Watson. McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Hanfelder.
Yes. This is time for a public comment. I request that if you make a public comment, to hold it to three minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment at this time?
I'm Dr. Ed Ragsdale, and I've operated a farm two and a half miles from here on Siler Road for forty-five years, and I would like to see more emphasis on agricultural education here at Lewis &amp; Clark. I've attended some very good programs at Lincolnland and Litchfield and John Wood in Griggsville or Perry, Illinois, and both of them over an hour away. The agricultural program doesn't have to involve very much money, and a person could study here, get a two-year degree, and then transfer to an excellent program, top in the country practically, at the University of Illinois. I don't know how many of you saw the Mike Bloomberg statement that it doesn't take hardly anything to be a farmer. All you have to do is dig a hole, throw some seed in, put some dirt on it and water it, and you're a farmer. He could teach anybody in that big audience to be a farmer. And farming is very difficult. It's becoming more and more technological, and the more you know, the better you will do. I just think that it's an area where we could do more. A large part of Lewis &amp; Clark's territory is agricultural, and the number-one industry in the state is agriculture. There are 2,500 companies that process Illinois food for people to consume, and it's the leading processor in the country, apparently, more than any other state. So I think that's something to look at. One of the more interesting comments about Bloomberg's statement was made by the Governor Kristi Noem of South Dakota, and she said that it didn't make any sense at all, and who does Mike Bloomberg think he is? It's really dumb for him to do that, but I'd like to see us have more emphasis on agriculture. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Any other comments? If no more public comments, we need a motion to adjourn to exec- Do we have a motion? So move. A second?
Second.
Okay, got first and second. No comment. Roll call.
Tulgetzky.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Hanfelder.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to adjourn to another room, and be patient. We'll be back shortly to continue the meeting. Thank you. Resume meeting.
Tulgetzky.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Hanfelder.
Yes.
Item four on the agenda is the Omnibus Agenda, and the following items will be approved in one motion unless any board member wishes to have an item pulled prior to the vote. To approve? Okay. Mr. Watson makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Tulgetzky.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Wertz.
Yes.
Hyon.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Rust.
Yes.
Hanfelder.
Yes.
McCain.
Item five, informational items. Lori?
So items M through Q are as presented in your board book if there's any questions on any of our grants or contracts. If not, I would like to invite Dr. Dobby Heron to the podium. He is our East St. Louis Higher Education Center Director of Academic Affairs, and I know some of you wanted an update on what's happening at East St. Louis, so Dobby is here tonight, along with, I should mention, I know both Jackie Schilling and Dr. Lavici Carter are also here. They make up our staff at East St. Louis.
I'd like to begin by saying thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to update you all on what's happening in East St. Louis. I know it's been a while since we've had a chance to update everyone on what's been happening, on the progress we've made, so we are very thrilled to be here. And I'd like to begin by pointing to the wonderful picture of the students behind you. I assure you, when we arrived on campus in 2018, those are not the expressions of the people, those are not the expressions that we saw when we walked on campus. People were not eager to see us. We thought we would have a welcoming committee. Unfortunately, that was not the case, and the reason it wasn't the case is because we were unaware of the structure of the campus. We came into it expecting a welcome committee and that the city of East St. Louis would be there to embrace us without understanding the nuances of what was already in place. We had to learn the structure. Once we did that, we were able to make progress by becoming immersed in the community and by asking the community to become involved in what we were doing on campus, which then led to pathways to opportunities for our students. I'd like to begin by kind of pointing out the structure of the campus, because I know if you've visited, it can be a little confusing. It was to us as well. From the outset, it appears as SIUE's campus. They have branded it. They've been there for an incredibly long time, and they've done wonderful work, and it appears as though SWIC and Lewis &amp; Clark are bringing up the rear. But in actuality, there are three strong entities that make up that campus, which are all funded in part by ICCB. We, Lewis &amp; Clark, are totally funded, 100% by ICCB, so any programming we do and students we enroll is all revenue for Lewis &amp; Clark. We also differ in what we do and how we do it. SIUE oversees the facilities, the maintenance, the campus security. SWIC, they have GED testing, highway construction in their CNA program, whereas we offer the academic transfer programs, the career and technical education, developmental ed, dual credit, and adult education. We do what the others don't. We're also in a very different position, and we oversee the Leadership Board, which consists of Lewis &amp; Clark's VPAA, our Vice President for Enrollment Management, ICCB's Executive Director, Chief of Staff or their Executive Deputy Director, SWIC's VPAA, SIUE's Provost, as well as East St. Louis District 189 Representative. From ICCB's perspective, and in the grant, it stated that we should have nine members on the board, we've added a St. Clair County Rep, because we understand that in order to be successful in East St. Louis, we have to work with the Workforce Development Group. We have to be involved, and we have to understand more than just the college piece. In East St. Louis, it's critical that we understand the total picture. I know there's a lot to look at here, and I'm aware that all of you probably have access to the grant, so I won't read everything, but these are the deliverables that ICCB has in place for Lewis &amp; Clark. We are to provide career and technical programming, transfer and dual credit, and also be heavily involved with business engagement. Our programming consists of medical assisting, warehousing, hospitality program, and our Child Development Associate. Our business engagement pieces, we work heavily with local employers. We have to. We understand, based on our initial climate survey, that the end-demand industries require a relationship, because we're trying to create a pathway from the public to the educational route on to employment opportunities, so it's important that we connect with and have a working relationship with those entities. So again, East St. Louis has a history of people coming and going, and we realized we weren't going to be successful until we involved ourselves in the community. Trust is a big factor, and we can't just walk in, set up shop, and assume that we are going to educate East St. Louis, not until we get involved. So we became involved with East Side Align. We are always at city events. I've stayed after work and attended church events, played basketball with some of the, you know, local kids, just to familiarize myself with people. The mayor's office is very involved with what we do. I meet with the mayor probably once every two months. We are involved with the Connections to Success Program and other local nonprofits. In the past year and a half, we have really stepped off campus and made a, I think, a presence in East St. Louis that they hadn't had before. As such, the community responded. They got involved. So what you see before you are just a few pictures of some of the events that we've had. In the top left-hand corner, we have Senator Belt and State Representative Latoya Greenwood attending our Cannabis in the Community event, which had nearly 100 participants. We've had some Careers in Nursing events. On the top right, East St. Louis Mayor, Robert Eastern, also attended. Now here's the exciting news. Once we became immersed in the community, we found that people really took an interest in our responsiveness to their needs and how quickly we could get things done. As such, we have been able to enroll a total of 251 participants over the past year and a half. These figures are broken down in the packets that I've made for each board member. It goes into more detail. Those opportunities have led also to further engagement from the community. We get contacted on a regular basis for wanting to use the space, wanting to know about what types of programs we have. From a community perspective, the Department of Motor Vehicles is on campus now. The Envisioning Justice Group is coming to meet with myself and the United Way Representative and Urban League. The mayor's office wants to have a citywide campaign to promote the campus and get people on campus. We've also expanded our business development opportunities. We had the entire HR staff of Geodis on campus two weeks ago to look at our forklift simulator and our warehouse program. They're interested in starting an apprenticeship program with us and funneling their employees through our training. The same thing with DB Shanker. We also have relationships with the Casino Queen for our Bridge to Hospitality Program. Been talking to their head chef and their HR rep about how we can create some sort of pathway or relationship for their employees to be trained through our 16-hour Bridge to Hospitality Program. And student engagement, we have, coming up in the spring, or actually, coming up in two weeks, the next cohort for our Bridge to Warehouse participants. We've got eight ready to go. We have an Intro to Public Speaking course that we have, we are looking to recruit a faculty member for. We have 20 application or enrollment forms ready to go. Our Bridge to Health Partnership with UMSL and SIUE is looking very strong. We have an MOU in the works. We have also expanded to be able to recruit slightly outside of our 189 district and work with our Cahokia students, which again increases our capacity to do programming. And we also have mentoring. I work with the local National Panellanic Council, and they're the local Greeks. They're very involved in East St. Louis. They want to work with the students, and they want to be on campus. So the caveat was that if you come on campus and have programming, I need you to start mentoring. I need you to show these young students what, not just what Greek life is like, but what college is like. You know, we need to get them excited. We need to keep these conversations going. Things have really turned around for us in the past year and a half, almost two. We started with no students. We started with, without offices, with poor relationships, with people who didn't want to work with us. We've shifted the culture slightly. We're not exactly where we want to be, but the progress we've made, I think, is certainly measurable and one that I know me and the staff are very proud of. We work well with SWIC. We work with the mayor's office with SWIC to create programming. If they have students that are better fitted for what we have, they'll recommend students. If we have students who are interested in their welding programs, we'll recommend students to their welding program. We are all collaborating in an effort to uplift the city, and ICCB is supportive of that, and they are, I won't say rolling out the red carpet, but they are making themselves available and the resources to make that happen for East St. Louis. Some of the challenges that we continue to face, one is the branding. That center has had a lot of entities come and go, and the public remembers that. And as such, we want to create the center to be a place where it doesn't feel like an SIUE campus, or Lewis &amp; Clark campus, or a SWIC campus. It's an East St. Louis campus serviced by Lewis &amp; Clark for academic programming, overseen by SIUE, with options to go into welding, CNA, and highway construction through SWIC. So truly, a collaborative partnership would help. A consistent faculty pool would help. That's another challenge. I've got a meeting with the Director of Strategic Partnerships for District 189 on March 24th to figure out how we can kind of grow our own. There are a lot of good teachers in East St. Louis. We need them. We have programming. We have students. We just need a regular body of faculty to teach. And I had cohesion among the entities. I crossed that out because it's really not an issue anymore. The working relationships on campus have really made our time there more enjoyable, and it's easier to get things done. What we need, SWIC might have. What SIUE needs, we might be able to help. So it's, I don't know, it's come a long way. We're very proud. The numbers that we've put up, I think, in a year and a half have been, for us, we're pretty happy with. And that is our update on what's been happening on the East St. Louis campus. Are there any questions or comments at this time?
I didn't see you mention the SIUE Charter High School up there. Is that where we have some dual-credit programs going?
Yes. All of our dual-credit is run through the Charter High School, which is on campus, so we literally can just walk upstairs, meet with their principal or their advisor, and we enroll their students. I think we've got 20 or 21 students enrolled in dual-credit right now.
How about dual-credit with District 189?
The Charter High School is District 189.
What about the public school there at East St. Louis?
That has been a challenge. We are still trying to get in. Do you have a meeting with?
Yes, I have. We're meeting with the East St. Louis High School on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
To visit that conversation.
Yep.
So I see in the spring enrollment, there's 32 and 20 are dual-credit. So are those our teachers, Lewis &amp; Clark? Yeah. It's just credit through Lewis &amp; Clark?
Yes.
Okay. So why was there a drop-off in the spring 2020, or, you know?
Why have fewer students decided to take dual-credit?
I hate to ask you that, but yeah.
Could have been fewer students in the classroom. I mean, it could be a number of factors as to why we didn't have as many enrolled.
Can I add? Sorry. The Medical and Strategic Program, we had a cohort come through and they finished. So our numbers were up because of that cohort of Medical and Strategic students, and they all completed 100%. And so that's why the numbers dropped off.
Does SIUE have courses there, or do they just maintain the building?
They maintain the building. They have a number of grant-funded programs, Upper Bound and several others, but they don't have any courses on campus.
They actually own the building?
They own one building. ICCB owns the rest.
Okay.
They just have branded the campus with their logos.
When a student does take a course there, do they have to pay anything? Do they have to pay tuition of any kind, or is it all free?
Well, we've been working really closely with Rick Stubblefield and our WEOWA offices. So far, the students haven't had to, I don't think we've had any tuition. It's, no.
To try to avoid that, right? Okay.
Tuition is assessed, but it's hard to pay or get.
Yep.
We have to charge district tuition.
And district tuition.
And I'll just point out, too, that a lot of the programming that we offer, so for instance, we're working with the SIUE's Upper Bound program. They have funds in their grant to pay for tuition for a lot of their students, so we're going to provide courses for them, like the Intro to Public Speaking this summer. They won't pay for that, but as a part of their experience with Upper Bound, Upper Bound will be paying their tuition for that course. So we try to use the opportunities, the grant funds, the funds from St. Clair County that we have, because we know East St. Louis, the community members, they don't have, you know, a lot of disposable income to pay for things.
And since we don't have tuition written into our grant, we have to be creative and find ways to, either through WEOWA or however we can get it done.
So like this highway flagger program, does somebody from Bethalto go down there and teach that then, or do they, those students?
Those students were bused up to Bethalto.
Okay. That's what I wondered.
Yep.
And the teacher is from there? Okay.
I'm just curious, what kind of feedback are you receiving from ICCB and Brian Durham in terms of, you know, are we meeting expectations in their eyes? And just what's the feedback that they're giving us?
The feedback from ICCB is very happy with the work we've done. I asked Jennifer, the Deputy Director specifically, I need some feedback. What are we doing? How well are we doing? Are we meeting your expectations? And according to Jennifer, very much so. They're very pleased with the work we've done, the progress we've made. One of our tasks was to digitize 27,000 transcripts that have been at that campus since the 40s and 50s. We've digitized, Jackie, we haven't done anything, Jackie has digitized over 9,000 of those transcripts. ICCB is very pleased with the work we've been doing on that campus.
And why are we doing that?
It's in the grant. They've asked us to. Yeah, so it's one of the deliverables.
There was no good way to provide information if a student wanted the transcript or any kind of enrollment information. It could literally require a person a full day to try to find the file and sit through it.
When we got there, all of those files were in, they were just all over the place. We had to literally organize them, get them in a room, get the software. It was an undertaking.
One of your slides talked about business engagement, and I think there were two or three or four businesses showing up there. Are there any others that you can mention? Like, I know there's some businesses like Insouge that are, Cerro Copper, I think is still there, Monsanto's there.
The businesses that we've reached out to have really been in the areas of our warehousing and forklifting operations. I've reached out to many of the companies in Insouge because they're so close. Unfortunately, the response from a lot of the companies just hasn't been there, so I've been working with those who've really been responsive and responding to us, but I'm certainly making the effort. We need as many resources as possible.
Remind me what the term of this grant is?
This grant runs through the end of June.
And do you think it'll be, you'll get another shot at it?
Renewed. Absolutely.
You're getting that feedback?
Absolutely. We had a leadership board meeting yesterday on campus, and that's the impression that we're all under. ICCB wants to continue this. They're pleased with the work we're doing. We're overseeing the campus operations, and we're coordinating activities with the other entities. Prior to us being there, none of this was happening.
Yeah, because these things take a long time to get going, and I think working with the principal is probably a key thing, to get students in there, to show them a way
Absolutely.
to be trained.
I do have just one last question. There was something called Connections to Success. What is that?
Connections to Success is a nonprofit organization that focuses on individuals who have either been recently released or who are in transition. They take these individuals through professional development training. We attach to Connections because their population needs employment. Their population needs training. So they go through the professional development piece. We interject or come in at some point early on in that process and explain our programming, what we have to offer, and then we kind of funnel their students through our training, because they have to have either a stable income or a place to live within 90 days. So Connections is both in Missouri and in Illinois, so we've had a really good partnership with them.
I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly. So these are people that have been, like, recently released from prison?
Yes.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next will be discussion items.
The construction status report is on page 437 in your packets. There's, as usual, nothing new to report on our main complex foundation improvements. We will be going to bid, or I should say, CDB is going to be going to bid, and we do anticipate a early summer 2020 completion, or I'm sorry, start. And then the Haskell Hall fan coil replacement, we are still awaiting the approval of the design submission by Brick Partnership to CDB. There is- There is a new item on there. I just want to draw your attention to. It's the Scott Bibb Center Solar Installation. This is a hundred percent funded through an IGEN grant and it's designed not only to add some energy efficiency to that site, but also as a demonstration site for, for our adult education programs there as well. So we're, we are on a tight deadline to get that done due to the grant funds. So we are hoping to have everything completed by June thirtieth of this year there, so. Any questions? If not, I would invite Gabe Springer to the microphone to give us an update on the employee classification plan implementation and the executive compensation study that Gallagher is completing.
Okay, so we were last speaking on this topic back in November two thousand nineteen when the board approved the new structure to then roll out the implementation of the new classification system. So just to give some kind of big picture items that attach back, I won't go through everything. We went back over in the fall regarding the system and how we got there. But this was, if you remember, the first time that we really comprehensively looked at this classification system in, in about twenty years. It was actually eighteen years before we started looking over this from two thousand. So during the course of the evaluation, when we came through, got the completed product, we were able to gain efficiency in the system by reducing the number of pay scales or segmented pay scales on campus from three to one. So we used to have a separate pay scale for our NGREC facility, a separate pay scale for our IT staff. Now we have a single system which involves every staff employee underneath one roof. In addition, this also allowed for the college to cut the number of classifications of positions or pay grades in half from thirty-five prior to the system rollout to now we have thirteen, or seventeen pay grades. A total of a hundred and eighty full-time and part-time positions are now classified in the college's single system. And over the timeframe of the evaluation, we were able to increase actually the number of part-time positions that are now graded in the system by ten percent. So we have had, you know, over the years, a number of positions which we would call off the grid. So they kind of had a single pay rate adjusted to some market comparison and they never kept pace with the remainder of all of our other staff positions. So now, excuse me, an additional ten percent of our part-time positions now are graded alongside of all of our other part-time rates and positions to maintain competitiveness with the market. So getting into the implementation of the actual system. So the pay grades and related information that we had after approval in November concerning the implementation of our system, we distributed all of those two hundred and five individual communications to employees who were impacted. So two hundred and five individual communications went out at the beginning of December. After the November approval, those pay rates were effective December one of two thousand nineteen. We then unveiled an appeals process which allowed employees who received those communications to appeal their determination, which was made by HR, made by the college. They had, full-time employees had the opportunity to appeal that process, through that process over the course of about one month through early January. Part-time employees had the ability to appeal their determinations during the month of January. Appealing a grade determination really required the employee to describe to us essentially what we missed. So give us specific decision-making responsibilities that they believed were not evaluated appropriately during the process. We received twenty-four total appeals from employees, full-time employees. We did not receive any part-time appeals. All supporting documentation then went through at least two rounds of review, one by myself, one by Dr. Artis. And in some cases, we did refer appeals to a third-party consultant, Gallagher that we worked with. They did assist us at no additional cost to our initial contract. Of the twenty-four that were submitted by full-time employees, a total of four appeals were granted. Of those four appeals that were granted, one of them came with financial impact to the college which amounted to current fiscal year about a thousand dollars additional money. So what happens next, you might ask? As you may recall, the goal is to allow for implementation of the new structure over the next several fiscal years until we reach full implementation in July of two thousand twenty-two. During the phase-in, current positions which fell under market value will begin to phase in over the next few years until they reach that minimum benchmark salary. Positions that we advertise publicly now will fall into the same scale. So we won't be hiring new positions at higher levels than our current staff are making. We'll phase those minimum pay rates in over the next few years. Following full implementation in two thousand twenty-two, assuming everything goes well, we would look to work with the board annually on whether cost of labor increases are necessary to those pay ranges to keep pace with the market. And last but not least, just one other thing we'll want to consider, as you probably all are aware here, is the Illinois State Minimum Wage and how that may impact our compensation structure. With the results of the analysis, we don't expect too many of those positions to actually have impact. I think this current year, in the next coming year, we're going to have a single position that may need to adjust up because of the state minimum wage. And then over the next five years beyond that, we're looking at probably eight to ten positions that would probably intersect with that minimum wage pay, so. Any questions on that item before I go to the executive compensation?
I know that this is kind of a subjective evaluation, but we got, had twenty-four people appeal that, you know, just a shade over ten percent. How do you feel about the overall acceptance of our, of our people, their acceptance of this system?
Yeah, it's hard to say. As the, as the HR director, everybody probably doesn't tell me their real feelings, but you know, we did get a lot of positive feedback. We got feedback as well that, you know, there were, there were concerns that people didn't feel that they were reviewed appropriately. They didn't have ample time to maybe profess their case to the third-party consultant. We certainly took a lot of feedback, constructive feedback, and, and took our time in reviewing the applications. We felt like the opportunity to allow an employee to advocate for themselves through the appeals process was important and we didn't take any of those lightly, so. Other questions? Okay, the other item I'd like to present on is just a status update on the executive compensation evaluation. So like the classification system and compensation structure proposal to evaluate executive compensation was approved by the board back in November as well. So this now puts us in the fourth month of work on that project with Gallagher. The first months of the project, just to give you kind of an idea of what, what happened during those months, involved, you know, my department and, and Dr. Artis identifying positions to evaluate, finalizing job descriptions for all fifteen of those positions and identifying the peer labor market comparatives. Along with the last step being developing that custom survey that would go out to our peer institutions to collect the data that we wanted and we needed. The fifteen positions that were included as part of that study were the Associate Dean of Adult Education, Associate Vice President of Accounting, Associate Vice President of Strategic Initiatives, Chief Information Officers, our Dean of Career Programs and Dean of Transfer Programs, our Executive Secretary to the President and Board of Trustees, our Executive Director of National Great Rivers Research and Education Center, our President Position, Vice President of Academic Affairs, Vice President of Administration, Vice President Enrollment and Vice President of Finance, Student Engagement, and then our Compliance Officer Position. So in February, the custom survey that we did develop with Gallagher went out to thirty-six institutions. We used the same cohorts that we use for the staff plan, so our ICCB state cohorts and our IPEDS cohort, which included institutions across the country. Thirty-four of these institutions of the thirty-six total were part of those two groups. We did add Lincolnland Community College and Southwestern Illinois College as peer groups as well, or peer institutions as well. So the original deadline to get that custom survey data back was March sixth. As of today, past that deadline, we now have a total of five institutions that have participated. We have three additional institutions that confirm they do plan to participate and another three who have indicated they may participate. As you can imagine and do with some simple math, that leaves twenty-five institutions who have either declined. Five institutions have declined and twenty who have not responded to the survey. So Gallagher indicates that they have notified those twenty institutions, extending the deadline for an additional week to two weeks. So for those, just to give you an idea, for, I asked a question, who would decline and why would they decline? So the five institutions that did decline don't all provide reasons, but the ones that did provided a lack of, you know, cited a lack of manpower and/or other work commitments. So when you hear about how many didn't respond to the survey, you think about what are our goals then? How, what do we expect? What's best-case scenario in terms of how many would typically respond to something like this? And how many do we want in a perfect world? Best case, Gallagher tells us is fifty percent. So for our survey, we're looking at about eighteen institutions. So right now, we're almost halfway there. If you include the people who indicate they plan to participate, at minimum, they indicate they would like to get at least twenty-five percent, which would amount to nine responses. And as you may recall from the last study, they do indicate as part of a Department of Justice and Federal Trade Commission guideline that at least five data points do have to be responsive for each position. So that would be absolute bare minimum. Combine that data within analysis from external data houses like Coupa and Willis Towers Watson Mercer, those, those items. So what can we expect next? We can expect in my conversation with Gallagher this week that we can have enough data back from them after the two-week extension for the custom survey. We can expect to have data back within the next three to four weeks. I think absolute best-case scenario would be that we could present with a report in April and absolute worst-case would be that we'd back here in May at the May Board Meeting with final results. Any questions?
Yeah, refresh my memory. Are these the fifteen positions that you were talking about here, are they part of the classification system? They're, they're not. Are they just in a different category entirely, right?
Yeah, these positions now are, are graded and have been graded for as long as I know as, as executive positions. So they've not fallen within, in, within any current pay ranges that the college has, correct? The goal would be to establish those pay ranges.
Thank you, Gabe.
Sure.
Next action items, approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities, four thirty-nine, four forty. Is there a motion to approve? Motion been made, second? Discussion? Second? Call for the vote?
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
McCain? Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Next is the revised comprehensive agreement regarding the expansion of educational resources career agreement, page forty-one through four forty-seven. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Discussion? Is there any presentation on that?
I'll just add, this is obviously initiated by ICCB and just to clarify, it provides opportunities for students in districts that don't offer programming to take courses and other districts that do offer that programming at in-district rates. So they ask that all community colleges review this with their boards and, and approve.
Call for the vote?
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain? Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
W, twenty twenty ICCTA Outstanding Faculty Member Award nominee, Dr. Alan Bruha, page four forty-eight and four forty-nine. We, do we have a motion first and second?
Okay.
Need a motion? Okay, been second? Okay, now discussion. Joe?
Yeah, I am so happy to be here tonight to ask you to approve the twenty twenty Illinois Community College Trustee Association Outstanding Faculty Member Award nominee, Dr. Alan Bruha, who's a professor of chemistry at Lewis and Clark. I went to review the board item and decided I would just highlight a few things that explain to you why Dr. Bruha is so deserving of this reward. And I'll just show you my paper. It's just like everything's highlighted. So I will touch upon a few things. He's very deserving. I've worked with Alan for several years. He also serves as the Program Coordinator for the Chemistry Department. He's been Program Coordinator for Physics as well as Physical Science in the fa-, in the past. And one of the ways you know if you have a really good Program Coordinator on board is when you don't have to talk to them often, think about them often, you know they're doing their job. So, you know, weeks may pass sometimes when Alan and I haven't spoken and that's a really good thing. He's been here since nineteen ninety-three. He started prior to that, actually. No, he's been here since two thousand and two. He started in nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety-eight as an adjunct faculty member and he, he is just an amazing faculty person. He, students learn chemistry so well from him. Like I said, he staffs the other chemistry courses. He's been a mentor to many of our new chemistry faculty and it's just been really a pleasure to work with Alan. He's also served on several committees. He's been on the Center for Excellence in Teaching and Learning, the Green Committee, the Honors Committee. And I think one of his favorite perks of being at the college is he's also the assistant golf coach. I know Alan enjoys that quite a bit. He's worked on projects such as the Lewis and Clark Water Festival, Science Olympiad, Science Fair Judge. He's been on the Illinois Articulation Initiative Chemistry Panel and goes to a variety of national conferences regularly. Alan also every semester sends me his spreadsheet showing me how enrollments are doing in chemistry and he stays on top of it. So I could go on because I have a second page of highlighted items, but I think I'll leave it at that and give you guys the pleasure of hearing from Dr. Alan Bruha.
Thank you, Dr. Lane.
I've got, I've only got one page. It is a great honor to receive the Illinois Community College Trustees Association nomination, but it's really not my award. The award goes to an entire team of people who have helped me along the way to make my teaching here at Lewis and Clark successful. Retired Dean Dick Schneider hired me. Past and current Deans Sue Siwinski and Jill Lane have provided expertise when I've been functioning as a coordinator. Chemistry faculty Terry Jakobowski, who's retired, and current faculty members Julie Beidenosco and Jen Vance, we're in the trenches together, helping educate our students and providing a first-class teaching environment in our department. We were aided by numerous adjunct faculty who seldom get the recognition that they deserve. That list includes Pam Abbott, Becky Beal, and Lawrence Norseal, but there are many, many others. Our chemistry lab assistants, most notably retired Marietta Bear. When I started as an adjunct in nineteen ninety-eight, my first day was her first day. And we were lucky enough to have her for almost eighteen or nineteen years. But those folks make sure that our teaching labs are clean, organized, and well-maintained. It makes our job so much easier. Retired Division Assistant Beverly Smith and current Division Assistant Tammy Childers are the glue that hold us all together. That's where we go to when we all need help. Vice President of Academic Affairs Linda Chapman provides a wealth of information and advice on matters relating to the administrative side of education. And past President Dale Chapman provided leadership and vision for the entire school. But my efforts aren't limited to the classroom. As a faculty member, you serve on, on many different committees. Marjorie Sinclair Parrish helped with the SEEDLE Committee, the first committee I served on. Nate Keener and Scott Moss lead the Green Committee, which I've been a member of since the beginning for about the last 10 years. And I want to thank Mike Lemmons, past LCFA president. It was with his leadership that we were able to go through two different contract negotiations. And I want to thank head coach Gerald Mosier for hiring me or letting me be his assistant so I could fulfill kind of a longtime dream to coach golf. And special thanks to my wife, Jan. Without her love and support, it wouldn't make it all possible. So...now, I've listed a number of individuals, but there is an even greater number of students, faculty, staff, administration, and Lewis and Clark board members not mentioned, who play a part in me getting this award. It takes an entire team of people to make one person successful. So, to all those mentioned, and to the other members of the Lewis and Clark community who helped along the way, thank you.
Roll call to approve.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Need a motion to change April 14, 2020, board meeting start time to 5:00 PM. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Need a motion to change the May 2020 board meeting date to May 19, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tulgetzky?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
That completes our agenda. Dismissed.